I used to work at Colby Tours. I don't remember. I admit to it.
I hope we don't get snow before November.
That's where we were in March.
I could wait until next March.
Like I put insurance and when she's free and you can get there, I like that. Yeah.
We're gonna call a meeting to order. Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Thank you. Our third thing is public discussion.
Yes, that's why I'm here.
Yep.
I could have two minutes?
Yeah, sit up on up.
Hi Dar. I want to explain my letter to the editor. Do I chance it for you or not? Do I think EMS is an essential force of service? Anybody who's been around know it got to happen. There are other ways of handling things. I think so. Dar and I had a great conversation about it here last week one day. Reach out to other people. I want to make sure you guys have a backup plan if this gets voted down. That's my question. I guess my idea is I don't want to give them nothing. I want people to vote the way they want to vote. I'm not here to say no, vote no. It's not me. I think it needs to be. It's a needed service, but everybody should have their own opinion on how to vote. We had our meeting in Whittamore last week one day. Kyle was there, Curver Knapp was there. Joe, I think this is their girl. Yeah, Josh, what? Anyway, it got discussed and it got brought up. I said, you know, ninety percent of our calls don't require a paramedic discussion. Somebody says closer to ninety-five, ninety-eight percent. This past week, we had a doozy and we needed that. So how do you justify, you know, when you need it? Is somebody going to be available? We need them. So I will say it is a needed service here in the county. How many? How do you distribute them to help at the basic level? I want to answer your question. I can't answer it. But it is a need. Like a lot of times Dar and I talked, they'll say paramedic needed and transfers. I think that's a provider issue. We discussed satellite's needed. Depends what kind of pain meds, that kind of things, but that's off the top of a little bit. In Whittamore, one thing we're not sure is money. We're short of people. And by implementing all these paid EMTs in Algonquin, it's going to kill the volunteers for the rest of the community. So that's something to think about as this one side. How many volunteers you gonna get when you go to Algonquin and get paid full time? It's gonna hurt. Answer, I still don't. Getting back to my letter, you know, people are talking. I had one negative and ninety-nine percent were all positive. One thing that is being said was going to happen to Algonquin if it gets voted no. Rumor has it the city of Algonquin is not going to go out of state limits. I know Kurt Weisman said that at meeting a while back. Rest of the county's worried. What are we gonna do if they say we're only gonna complete our area? I'm hoping you guys have better values and morals than what the city of Algonquin is. That hey, we're all on this together. Whittamore covers Algonquin. If they have two units, I look not a backup. We cover it happens right off. Do we care? No, that's what we're here for. We're here to do what's best for the county. In our discussion, a lack I brought up about, well, this is a lot cheaper than what we're paying Iowa Lakes. Well, that turned into a heated discussion because there's three people taking the course right now and they are going to Iowa Central. Cause Iowa Lakes don't have the EMS director. So why is this county paying Iowa Lakes so much money or something? They're doing terrible for us. It's, it's a terrible deal. Our research hours, we either go through Niagara or Iowa Central because Iowa Lakes did very poorly. And Renell was at that meeting highly spoken how negative that school is. So that's something I think you guys, the board, need to discuss. Date with them. Either clean it up, start helping us, or let's try to bring a different college in. It's a fight. And I don't even know if that can be done or not.
We got very little control over the schools.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty poor. But one of the comments I got thrown back at me was on Facebook and I only do Facebook. Gary told me about it. Why don't you run with Algonquin? There's a reason I don't. I live in Algonquin. Will I run with them? No. It's the most mismanaged organization I've ever seen. They're out of control. Fully out of control. Happened since Gary left. There's nobody stepping up. City council tries to run them, they're doing a very poor job. We, Dar and I took business, we all have busy days. Like today, you guys have a lot of people here. Some days not submit. You relax. What do they do for our full-time people we're gonna hire on the days there ain't much to do? You can only watch Little House on the Prairie so many times. I mean, what, what do they do? That's a question that needs to go with that. But two topics that go hand in hand, and I think it's up to find the agenda for today. The Al, I do believe, biggest thing you gotta do is keep people informed. That's number one. You know, a lot of things get slid by and I had comments below. We didn't realize we're even voting for us. What is this? Nobody knew. I think Phil's doing a great job going around the cities. That's a big positive impact. But I think recording the meetings, getting them out there is very beneficial. But that's just it. I think most of you guys got my number. I do have some options. I think, like I said, I don't want to present them now. Let's see how the vote goes and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, thanks. Any other public comments? I can't see behind the poles or there's no people. But there is somebody sitting there. We got their hand up. Seeing none. Secondary road update, they're not here yet. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda and minutes dated October fourth?
We'll move.
Second motion by law, second by class, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously. We're up to pursuit regional.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cooper finances, I have to let Cooper tell us. Yeah, just like, just like we discussed before, very high inpatient fall, fall yields that we saw for July and August. And we're really seeing it in, in September and the startup October too. It's very much a mix of different things. No one specific reason why we're seeing a lot of people on our third floor higher than we've seen in a year, if not further. So, you know, definitely again, like we said, you know, good to, if people are sick to have them come here. But we definitely don't want people to get to that point where they are that sick for that kind of system amount of time. So hoping to see that go down a, a little bit. Our clinic volumes are high again during the month of August. We, we see that every year due to wellnesses before kids get back into school. That's as expected. So with that, we are starting fiscal year twenty-three add a net income so far prior, 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 primarily due to those inpatient volumes being so high. We just got through our single audit for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-one for the grant funding we had received through for COVID. That, that went well and they agree with our uses of the fun of the funds. As you know, they are very strict about uses of those funds. So that was good to get through that. Lastly, just seeing quite, quite a few insurance checks for the five, 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 five that we had to our shed back in May. So we purchased three vehicles and our tractor for the winter in the last month. So we are backed up to our full fleet. We did have our facilities director traveling across the state to try and get cars. As you know, they're hard to find, but we do have our full fleet left back now, which is good for our, for our staff to take up the cars when they're going out and see, pay, pay patients and those things so that they don't have, have to use their own cars. So any questions? Are we looking at this answer?
So we've currently now allocated all of our COVID relief dollars, so there are many dollars left. We have a couple of projects that we're still completing that are under the COVID funding, but we've not allocated all of those. So it was, it was a nice thing to get through that single audit, which looks specifically at the use of the appropriate use of those COVID relief dollars. So we'll have another audit on the remainder in twenty-twenty-four. Questions?
Financials look good.
They do look good. I don't know what you anticipated.
Look very strong.
It's a good, we'll just start out the year with our financials. Historically, it's not a case.
Are you still trying to try something different for the pharmacies, pharmacy drive-through? So it's not such a bottleneck.
Plan and I really call it a long-term plan because we went down to pre-COVID and then, you know, COVID struck and everything was placed on hold. And the cost of building right now is so prohibitive that we're not in a position to be able to move forward quickly with that. We do have a plan for it, but it's not something we can do quickly. Part of that reason is we're, we're somewhat grandfathered with the exterior topography of the facility. So when you, when you drive out there, you'll see it's a pretty big hill. And as the parking lot gets any type of attention, other than just a patch here and there, we have to meet the current code. And we don't meet that with the current incline. And so it would require a very significant amount of bill and some retaining and really elevating the parking lot. On the west side of the facility to make that happen. But you know, someday we'll be talking about the LP and where we have a path underneath the community that's shared first.
About staff?
Staffing is always a challenge. I can tell you that we have some very key positions open. One, one, we're looking for an echocardiogram. And that seems like kind of a simple fill. We've had a position open now since probably February and we can't even get a traveler. You know, so that's a really, really tough position to fill. There are just not very many out there. And we know there's at least a couple that live in our county, but aren't working as echo techs at this time and, and really don't intend to. And so we're working the schools and try to be a little creative. In terms of nursing physicians, we're sitting fairly, we have a couple of physicians open right now. LPNs are heard to come on. And we're a unit coordinator, LPN at this point in the league and medical assistance. So and then of course lab techs.
Do you have to send those people out to another facility then to take care of like an echo? Or is there somebody else in?
We're sending our patients out to other facilities for echos right now. We don't have anybody else in the house with that training or skill set. So.
What would you say would be the primary reason you think the ones here are not working as echo techs?
I think, you know, at least from what I can gather, the ability, they have the ability to stay at home and be safe. And nobody can argue, you know, they're a family, so.
So they're not driving to another facility, there's your best favor.
Just their own choices.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Flip.
And I agree with what Brian says, you know, think about a plan maybe. I don't think anybody disagrees that EMS is an essential service and needs to be an essential service. It doesn't go through, I think.
If it doesn't go through, it won't be an essential service. Trouble with the county is funding it. We're funding it now, but we have no control over it. We have no management control over it. Is that the right way to use tax dollars?
Yeah.
I have an issue with that.
I appreciate you guys are making clear on that. So you fund it to a really high degree.
Right.
Half a million dollars a year.
Over six, six hundred and some thousand.
Which is a lot.
Yeah.
And then what is the reporting relationship now? People like, any like, oh, I should know. People are asking me and I don't promise them no. What, what is the reporting relationship now?
Well, Phil comes in, gives us some lovely updates. But Phil has no control either over what? He's a county employee, not a city employee, so.
So Phil's employed by the county, the city owns and operates this.
Right. It is, is not the best scenario.
So any loans that are paid, they don't come across our desk. Yeah. It's all through the city.
And the city doesn't put any money into it. They just use the revenue from the ambulance service for their portion. And they consider that their portion of funding.
And I don't think any of us can argue that Medicare, Medicaid, even Walmart, they're not the payers, so.
It was a Band-Aid, what we're doing. We rip it off, what happens?
To pursuit county EMS then, or does it go to Algonquin? Then you also have the licenses throughout the county. Is that in addition to the?
No. And, and that dollar figure also includes Phil's salary and his budget at the county site too.
If there was an easy answer to it, we'd have it figured out, then. There isn't one.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm gonna put you on the spot, I just don't know.
And I would encourage everybody to attend the meetings that Phil's putting out.
Yeah, Brian told me the one in Whittamore was excellent.
It was.
Next job, so.
Find a solution, come tell us.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thank you.
Have a good one, guys. I've seen some more people come in after we closed public discussion. Is there anybody else that's come in late that has anything? If not, Doug. Yeah, go back to, go back to the road department.
Yeah, road foreman. I don't know if we're having any questions for the road foreman? Or anything? Otherwise I can kind of summarize everything when I have my discussion with you. We're, we're very busy right now with road construction. Get everything caught up with that. If it rains tonight, tomorrow, we'll be maintaining roads, ground roads.
When they get straight to the road section?
We, that's kind of an on-call thing.
You just gonna wait till you get the other road done, they come do it all?
No, we, I've got the contact made with Vogtle Traffic Services and they will do it sometime when they're near the area. But I can't give you an exact date. We have all the seal coat roads and then we have some like that Galbraith Road where they
build it.
It's smoothness work and some other places around the county.
Was they first, you dragged on that road lately, Galbraith?
I've not, no.
When they first milled it, it was smooth. You know, automatic came home that way. Not when you drive on it and wants to take your truck and do this. Some reason. At first it didn't do that. Now it wants to move you around as you're driving.
Yes. I, I hope that they look at you. This was on westbound traffic.
Yeah. Yeah, eastbound's nice and smooth. Scotty, that corner by Moms, they can't win. You guys graded four semi school over, right back to plow.
We just need some wishy-wishy. We gotta head with stuff. It's all, I know, partners don't want it, but
Yeah. We ain't gonna worry about what on the laptop this year.
It was funny, was there all the hog, we were, we've been just straight a couple of times.
Yeah, that's the road by John Earp, I'm, I'm a big part of it. Yeah. But that ain't really, that's something else.
Yeah.
Anything else, Doug or Scott?
None.
Roads look pretty good though, Scott. Where the dry as it is.
It's, it's been a journey, let's put it that way.
Yeah. Would you get that problem up Northville Street's taken care of or no?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Got a, a pretty better guy is busy with other projects and it's just tough getting them in to get it done. It's on the list, so.
Okay.
As soon as he gets here, we'll get him, get prepared back.
He said get a call maybe, I'd like to let him know that.
Yep, it's, it'll be there soon as soon as, as soon as the general can get here.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. We are up to discussion policy on animals allowed in the courthouse, county buildings. There he is. Go.
I just wanted to get some.
You're up, Todd.
I am?
Yeah, we're there.
Okay.
Animals. Do you want, oh, do you want to start the discussion on animals in the courthouse?
Um, well, I, the department had some at last Thursday.
Thursday.
Um, and the consensus among the department has been, I know you weren't there, but you were there, Roger.
Yeah.
Um, was that they didn't see it as being a need at this point in time for a policy that upon further research, the Algonquin, city of Algonquin has a leash law. And that it's in situations where there is a dog in the courthouse that is not on a leash, that each individual office will make sure that whoever sees it tells the owner that according to city ordinance, the dog has to be on a leash. And so they wanted, this was just their recommendation, they wanted to suggest to the board at this point in time, see how that goes before we go into a policy regarding animals in the courthouse.
So I guess the one question somebody had for me was if they do bring a dog in without a leash, can you tell them, do you know if we're leash on it or leave?
Yes, unless it's a service animal. So then you get into the situation with, if someone, you know, it has a disability and requires that dog. See that, you're going into a different realm. And even the ADA has that the service animal has to be under control. So, but control is implicit in control would be a leash or harness unless the service animal has to be free to do the job that it's trained to do for the person with the disability. So for example, if someone was paralyzed and in a wheelchair and the dog was trained to obtain things for that person, obviously that dog wouldn't be on a leash. So in that situation, that, but it still has to be under control. So if the dog is unruly, causing a problem, a disturbance, then absolutely they can be asked to be, to be removed. But I don't, I don't know of that being a problem, an issue, but you know, at least that's what the department has suggested.
I think it has been an issue.
I asked them to come in because she's been the one that has had the most contact with the animals in the courthouse and has witnessed some of the, the issues. So I wanted to hear her perspective on what she suspects.
Well, what, what classifies as a servicing? I mean, I mean, I know that there's people that have. I mean, are you, are we allowed to ask for their card? Are they?
No, there's no ability for us to ask. It's a violation of the ADA to ask to show identification. As a matter of fact, service animals don't even have to be marked. You know, there's two questions that can be asked. The first is is the dog a service animal required because of a disability? And what work or task has the dog been trained to perform? Those are the two questions that we can ask.
But the dog did growl at you at someone?
There wasn't, there wasn't, there, here's the thing, and I've explained this to Todd. The dog was doing this job and I was doing this job. The, the dog was not on a leash. She had to turn the person three times to get the dog back. But you're finding out that he was in training, no leash, nothing. And this dog is here on a regular basis. And like I've explained to Todd and Todd and I talked about this is that we're not going to get away from the dogs and I have no problem with the dog. But having it, having a leash and having some control over it keeps everybody safe.
Right, that's what the suggestion of the department had, so at least the discussion that we had was that they have to be under, all dogs in Algonquin have to be on a leash. And so there's just that limited situation where you have a service animal who is trained to do something that requires it to be unleashed. So in that situation, you know, you can say that according to the city ordinance, that dog has to be on a leash. Obviously wasn't under control. Service animals are trained very well and they, I've actually been around a few of them, you know, they don't, they don't leave their, their person aside. And usually they also, you know, you don't necessarily approach them and, and unless it's something that the owner handler gives permission to do. So yeah, in that situation, it growling, aggressive nature or not under control, then they can be asked to, to, to be removed.
Is the word as emotional support animals following?
See, that's the, that's the gray area. There's only a limited number of disabilities that qualifies as a disability under the ADA that would allow for a service animal. Generally, generally emotional support, both of them are considered service animals. And you know, there we have the, the problem. I mean, we have a lot of individuals that have dogs for that, that calming effect and emotional support aspect of it. So you know, if it's not a recognized disability under the ADA, then that dog, if we have a policy, would not be allowed in the courthouse. Now generally speaking, you know, in the courthouse, I think it would be more common for those animals to be on the third floor, you know, where the court is in that situation. I think that's where this animal was. Because of the nature of the business that we conduct up there. I guess I didn't want to, you know, ignore that situation. I was looking at it from the general aspect of the main floor business that we have. I don't know if there are a lot of animals, although we did have one situation that was brought to our attention in that meeting where a dog came in and, and just went around and into the treasurer's office. So obviously not under control and not in a leash and that's a problem.
I think with the, the emotional support, again, it's fine because on that there's for that third floor.
So the, the, in the meeting, we all recognize that we want to make sure everybody's safe, not only just our employees, but the public that comes to the, the, the building. And so if we, we enforce the law that's on the book now, that, you know, the dogs have to be leached, that we're hoping that that'll correct. that, uh, we're hoping that that'll correct it. And then see, if it doesn't, then, you know, obviously we have to go to different steps. But, um, um, you know, I, I think that was a little bit of the, the discussions regarding and centered around emotional support animals, uh, which, uh, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're able to allow that, um, unless it becomes a problem. So in a situation like that, I mean, that, that would be incumbent upon, um, an employee or a department head, uh, elected official to tell the person that that dog has to be on a leash according to, according to city law. Um, and if, you know, you don't have it on base, you'll have to re-go back.
Okay, is that fine with everybody?
Yeah.
We don't need to set up any signs or anything for that, that's just.
Well, we talked about that, um, you know, obviously you go into a lot of different businesses and it's, it's a different time. I mean, I, I brought up the fact, I'll bring it up in here, that, you know, when I was growing up, you just didn't see animals in buildings. I mean, it was a different time. Now you see more and more of that and, uh, recognizing that obviously, you know, there's a lot of benefit for people to have those, uh, those dogs, which especially for the emotional support we're talking about. But, uh, uh, you know, you go into, say for instance, uh, bond daughters, you know, and, and now you go in there, you'll see animals in there. And I think they invite them in there, but you'll see them in other places too. And I don't ever, I'm just saying this because I don't remember seeing any signs on the buildings that I go into regarding, you know, the, the city ordinance requires all animals to be on a leash. So I don't know if we have to go to that step, uh, uh, to do that. I think everybody, ignorance of the law is no excuse in this situation. Uh, so, you know, people who have their animals in the city of Algonah should know that their animals need to be on a leash. I believe they also have to be vaccinated. Um, and so I think right now, um, like the recommendation, we did discuss that, that signage probably wouldn't be needed at this point in time. Uh, and if, uh, it should happen to be needed in the future, then we can address it.
Okay.
Again, that's the recommendation of department head, department heads, um, obviously it's your decision.
I think that's good. We don't need to take any action then because the city of Algonah already has a policy.
As well use the tools that are in toolbox.
Bill, thank you, Doc. We are up to discussion, appropriate time to start and stop the recording during the board meeting. And if a policy is needed.
Might as well.
Well, I guess I asked Todd to, you know, to last week, uh, if, if we had the right to do this, I'll let Todd kind of explain.
Well, um, you know, I think that there's, uh, some discussion that was had, uh, in the past regarding recording meetings. I think you're moving forward to making decision, uh, to record the meetings. The reality is that the board meetings are under your collective control. Uh, so, you know, having a discussion between the five of you as to when to start and stop the recording, uh, would be appropriate. Um, you know, I can tell you from experience, uh, in the courtroom, everything's not recorded by tape recording or, or digital recordings, uh, through a stenographer. But everything that goes on in the public part of that proceeding is, is taken down and, and, and reported. Um, breaks, that's not reported. Uh, obviously, um, when the judge says to, um, we're going to go off the record, that's not reported. Uh, I would, uh, analogize that to this. It's your control of what you do with your meetings. The public portion, there's no, absolutely no reason for it not to be reported. And, and, uh, I think that provides a benefit for people who are not able to get away Tuesday mornings to come in and watch what the board is doing. We've had for a long time that. I think the, the, the public in my discussions with them appreciate that because they can pay attention to what's going on. Um, you know, without having to take vacation to come in and do so. We had a gentleman in here a couple of weeks ago that, um, you know, had to take vacation from his work to come in and, and be a part or see what was happening with, uh, uh, an agenda item that he was interested in. Uh, you know, the, being open, accessible, um, and, and transparent, I think is important. However, that being said, you know, you also have to take into consideration the parts that are not open to the public. So if we go into a closed session, uh, that by law cannot be, it's, it's recorded, but that recorded, recording is protected. So obviously there has to be some indication that the recording is off. Um, I'm not going to be comfortable discussing legal issues that are part of the litigation if I know that there's a potential that this is going to be reported. If that is a violation of the law. So, you know, if you want to start the recording at a specific time that the meeting starts, which is what the public is interested in, um, that's fine. I know that there's a, a concern about, uh, casual conversation before the meeting, uh, casual conversation during breaks. Um, there's, in my opinion, that's not considered part of the open public record and is not part of the public business. It'd be no different if, uh, someone threw a listening device in my car driving down the road as I talked to my wife. That's exactly what I would like in a two. Uh, conversations in that situation, uh, to a certain extent are protected uh, and protected with some heavy hitting, uh, uh, criminal laws. Okay? In other words, I just want to explain to you that, um, we are one party state. I mentioned that for the last two weeks. Only one party in the conversation has to know that they're being recorded. Okay? But it's important that the person who is doing the recording is part of the conversation. Okay? So you can't set something in and listen to a group of individuals and not be in the room. That's, that would not be part of the conversation. So the law provides that it is not unlawful under chapter eight oh eight being point two for a person not acting under color, color of law, which means not someone under the authority of the law to do what they do. Say for instance, law enforcement or some sort of a wiretap type of thing. To intercept a wire, oral or electronic communication, if the person is a party to the communication or if one of the parties to the communication has given prior to consent, prior consent to the interception, unless the communication is intercepted for a purpose of committing a criminal or tortious act in violation of the constitution of the laws of the United States or any state for the purpose of committing any other injurious act. Violation of this is a class D felony subject to five years in prison. I mean, it's, it's, it's important. It's important to the state of Ireland they have that on the books, alright? I'm not making any, any suggestion, determination or, or anything. I just want to know what, I want you to know what the law is in regard to this area. So my suggestion would be, uh, you turn it on, much the same as we've done for the years past when the high school did it. Turn it on when the meeting started or when the person who was recording is showed up. So, uh, and then, you know, it's turned off during breaks, it's turned off during the closing, uh, uh, closed meeting session and it's turned off after adjournment and that's it. I think everybody would be comfortable with that. Uh, I'm not suggesting that, you know, someone who is, is recording of the meeting, you know, that they have to abide by that, but you're talking about what you're going to be doing as part of your policy for this. Um, but, you know, that doesn't just go with the recording for the, the board, it also goes for the public. Uh, you know, if you're in here, um, you know, if I were to leave my phone here, because it's that simple nowadays. It used to be, um, that we'd have people come in with a little micro recorder in their, their shirt pocket. So you, you know, you knew that that was, uh, possible. Now anybody with a phone can open it up, start recording. Uh, and if I were to do that, leave my phone here and leave the room and collect information that was being, uh, discussed during that time, um, that would be a problem because I'm not part of that conversation. Now, the, the, the thing about that though with the public, if you're in open meetings, I think in that situation, you're having a discussion regarding topics of concern for the public, uh, and that reporting's done, much the same as this right here for the, the.
Radio.
The radio, okay, or the newspaper, you know, they're recording the public, uh, that's different. I mean, you know, because it's in an open setting and it's open to the public, I think that there'd be an implication that that would be fine. But if I'm, you know, putting it in there in a situation to try and record something that is not in part of the public conversation or not of public interest, I think then that would be a problem.
Well, there was an issue where there were people in the court, we took a break and there were people in here discussing things, sitting there and the recording was on and it was put on Facebook.
Well, I, I, like I said, I'm not going to get into any instances of.
That was the issue that.
Right. I'm just saying that, you know, um, I think that anybody in here who, um, may be having a, a conversation with anyone, uh, if I had placed a listening device, um, in that conversation, I wasn't part of it, I think they would naturally be upset and, and that would be a problem.
That's the issue that we had. So does, you think we need to have you write a policy for this? Or can we just, or just make a, just have a motion on it? Can't we just?
I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you can have a policy, but I think the bottom line is that if you just kind of set it out, uh, how you're going to, um, how you're going to conduct that, uh, and how it's going to be broadcast for the public to see. Uh, I think in that situation, you're probably fine. I mean, uh, it's up to you. If you want a policy, the, the, you know, the policy would be something that you could establish, uh, for future boards, um, you know, that, that, uh, will have obviously the ability to amend it and change it if they want to, but I guess I wouldn't see the need to have a written policy on it, um, but it's up to you.
Alright, I'm going to make a motion that, um, any recordings, uh, be started that when the pledge of allegiance got before and that they are turned off during break when the, when the chairman calls for a break and, and then turn back on when he reconvenes the meeting after break and that it's turned off when the chairman calls for adjournment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Call for a roll call vote, please.
Yes, um, could have discussion.
That seem appropriate to you, Todd?
What's that?
Would that seem, that motion appropriate to you?
Yeah, and during the public parts of the, the meeting.
Right, well, that's, I said, that's why I use those, because the meeting starts when we say the pub, when we say the pledge of allegiance, that's the start of the meeting.
Right, um, I understand in my discussions with Derek that, uh, there's going to be some signage as far as recording. Um, you know, and, and I thought, so if I'm in here in a closed session, you know, that's, that's going to be my indication that it's not recording.
Yep, you still button them up.
Because it's illegal to record a closed session.
But, but, we've tested that, um, Microsoft Teams doesn't give us high resolution, so the photo quality is pretty poor. So we're going to use a different application, it's on six point dollars.
The only thing will be is we won't know when Kyle's recording and not recording because there won't be a light that tells.
Right, I mean, that, that's just part of the, that's just part of, of the world we live in right now. Okay, um, the only thing I can say is that, you know, the law protects illegal recordings. Yeah, so, um, you know, I think that, uh, you just have to, to trust that that's, you know, what's going on and, and yeah, I mean, you can't really control individuals. Uh, everyone in here could be reporting this conversation. You know, it's being recorded by the newspaper or radio, so, um, yeah, we just have to trust that, uh, you know, there's, there's going to be that adherence to the law.
So one thing I would ask is what happens when there's county business that's discussed prior to eight o'clock? There's a couple individuals up by the board table this morning before I got here. Don't know exactly what they were talking about, don't really care, but there's definitely been conversations about county business prior to eight AM. So is that open to the public or not?
Well, well.
It should be.
It should be helped handle, you know, those things happen in open session, so you wait till after the pledge of allegiance. That's what I'm saying. So I mean, you know, you have to make sure that you're controlling that because obviously, you know, any type of discussion that should be held in an open session needs to be postponed until that happens. Um, you know, it's, it, you just have to make sure that you, you, uh, adhere to all of those requirements. So if it comes up and, and there's discussion, the, the, so often it's, it's, um, it's a fluid situation where someone's comes in early and wants to get going on it and they just have to be instructed that, hey, meeting starts at eight o'clock, pledge allegiance, and then we'll discuss, um, those types of things. So I mean, that, that would eliminate that, that issue.
If it's handled that way.
Yeah, and I think that that, that's the way it should be.
I don't know, I didn't hear anything that was.
I'm not, I'm not speaking for today specifically, but there's been times regularly where claims or whatever else are, uh, discussed prior to the meeting, just so any questions are.
We go through the claims prior to the meeting and we look at all the claims and if we have a question, one of us knows the answer, then address it. But you approve the claims at the beginning of the meeting, so we put in there, have to have that discussion sometime.
Well, I mean, then, you, you, I guess you gotta have it, uh, one way or the other. And, uh, once you start the, the business, you know, that's, uh, which claims, you know, that would be something that I think may be interesting to someone out there in the public. So either start it at eight o'clock or start the recording when you're discussing the claims.
But, and that's, that's not the only topic necessarily, that's just an example.
I mean, you know, you can probably go back in, in history and maybe a lot of situations that may, uh, have, uh, you know, been handled differently or whatever, but the, the bottom line is, you know, you're trying to start something now and go forward. Uh, you know, what's in the past is in the past, but looking at it from the standpoint of with this recording, I mean, if you're going to, in order to approve the claims, because that would be part of the county's business, you're going to approve the claims at eight o'clock and discuss them prior to eight o'clock and start the recording whenever you start the claims. Um, you know, the, the only other way to do it is don't show up till eight o'clock. I mean, you know, uh, or sit down at two minutes and just be silent until you, you do the pledge of allegiance. I mean, that's, i- it's, it's your board's decision to determine how you want to do that. Uh, but, uh, uh, you know, depending on certain aspects of that, uh, you know, I don't know how many people would be interested in claims. I suppose it'd be the ones that are affected by it. Um, but, uh, you know, simple, simple discussion about, um, ministerial acts are not considered open, uh, are not considered part of the, the, the open meeting, but, um, you know, look, looking at it from the standpoint of, um, making sure that all the business is covered, I, you know, start it when you start discussing that.
Yeah, well, the reason we talk about claims once in a while is we have Tammy go get the answers for us before the meeting started. Otherwise we'd waste a half hour in the meeting. But we can do that, it just prolongs the meetings.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, but it's, it's not really, right?
We don't.
I mean, your discussion of it, I mean, you're still acting on part of that, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you want to start it, uh, you know, if you want to just open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and this is when we're going to start hitting the agenda items, okay? But if you're going to be discussing a matter that may be interesting to, uh, someone in the public, you can hit the recording there and, and they can decide for themselves, you know, if they want to watch it or not. Um, I just think that it probably would be a good practice, uh, if you're going to be discussing, you know, even that type of situation, just start the recording and go from there. Or wait to discuss that until after the part of allegiance.
Okay, can we have a, can I have a vote? Any other discussion? Otherwise roll call vote, please.
Sticker.
I will abstain.
Casey?
Yes.
Lost?
I'm abstaining.
Clap.
I'm going to vote yes. I don't understand the abstain part of this at all.
Jerks.
Yes, motion carried. I'd like to ask, why are you abstaining?
You don't have that right to ask.
No, okay.
The other thing I would bring up is if there are recordings on YouTube that have conversations where you're not present for those recordings, maybe those should be edited out or removed. Might be worth considering. For that, it's, what, what do you want?
You just heard the rules from Todd. He just heard the rules from Todd. It's, it's not legal to record people unless they know they're being recorded and you're doing that.
Uh, that's not what he said.
Well.
Um, you're a part, if you're a part of the conversation, uh, only one person has to have knowledge of the recording.
Well, he leaves a room with the recording on.
Well, yeah, you have to be part of the conversation.
You gotta be part of the conversation.
Public, public portion of the.
That's the complaint that I got, he wasn't in the room and their recorder was on. Good.
I want that light on the wall though.
Yep, absolutely.
So the public can see, so the public can see that there's a green light, they know at break time, okay.
Red, it's still on, shouldn't be on. Absolutely, it's a nice setup, so. And we can put two on, on one side of each, uh, of both if you want, we can look at it after the meeting.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Are we doing something?
Uh, it's coming up. We have a budget amendment hearing. But I have a motion to open up the hearing, so move, open by class, do I have a second? Second by Stecker, do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
You guys have some question about.
Yep, we have it on our iPads. Anybody have any questions on the budget amendment?
We just wanna give a recall review, Tammy, so the public knows what we're doing.
Sure, um, so notice a public hearing and amendment of current budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, so basically, we have amendments for intergovernmental, nine thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, for a total, uh, revenue of nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Then for operating expenditures, we have public safety and legal services amendments for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, administration, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, non-program current, three hundred dollars, capital projects, a hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars, subtotal expenditures of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Then we have an amendment to our beginning fund balance, because we received our second half of ARPA funds in June, so that is one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. And most of our changes were because of allocation of ARPA funds, we had an ICAP insurance increase, adjustment to mental health salary, uh, GIS health insurance, uh, tourism adjustment, and adjusting the beginning fund balance, as well as the receipt of opioid settlement funds.
Board, do you have any questions on that? Hearing not, they move to close the hearing. I have a motion by class to close, do I have a second? Second, I'll take them by last, roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve budget amendment. By resolution, well, you got the number down already, by resolution number ten eleven twenty-two oh one. So moved, motion by class. Class second. Second it. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, do a little, okay, we'll do a little call votes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
Do you have Luke in here?
Yeah.
Let's just, uh, I just had it here. Luke is, uh, yeah. Two ninety-four. Yeah, Luke, do you wanna come down to the boardroom, we're gonna be talking.
We are up to Summit Carbon Solutions, we have somebody here from Summit.
Oh, you're hiding again.
I was hiding behind the pole, sorry about that.
Yep.
How are y'all doing?
Good.
You guys not, if I pass these out?
Sure.
Just a few handouts in here, but I'm in a folder this time, so it's a little easier. There we go.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll just start out by, uh, kind of reintroduce to myself.
Don't worry.
Yes, there are. So, my name is Kaylee Lynn Gray. Um, I work for Turnkey Logistics, representing Summit Carbon Solutions, uh, primarily doing the non-environmental permitting, um, so road crossing and stuff like that, that's Doug Bergold, who was here with me last time. Um, he's your point of contact for this county, uh, for the non-environmental permitting. So my primary job is going around to county boards, giving presentations, answering questions, um, stuff like that, and we're trying to do this on a sort of quarterly basis, uh, just to keep the line of communication open. Uh, so, last time I was here, we kinda went over the importance of the project, why Summit Carbon is pursuing the project. We went over the tax numbers and I gave you guys a brief project update. So, today, I'll make it, you know, a little bit quicker and we can, uh, get to your questions and have a conversation. Uh, just gonna give you guys a little bit of an update, so construction, we do expect that to start at the end of next summer, so August, September, twenty twenty-three. Um, and then as far as land acquisition, as of the fifth of this month, in Iowa, we are at fifty-three percent of easement miles acquired, um, in Iowa. And then, as far as permitting, we have submitted some permits in the state of Iowa, I don't believe any have been submitted in Kassuth yet, uh, but that is, uh, coming. And then partnerships and investors, I think we kinda went over that last time, but I have this little sheet for you guys that kinda goes over some of our large, uh, investors and then some of our partnerships listing, um, our project states. Um, and then I think last time we also went over the community investment aspect, um, I'll just kind of go over that briefly again. You know, at the end of the day, Summit Carbon Solutions, we are a part of the community, um, we're based in Ames, we're gonna have people living, uh, and working locally to maintain the line, um, once it is finished. So, um, we are looking for ways to plug into the communities, whether that be through volunteering time or making donations, so. Um, my name and contact information are at the bottom of this handout here that says Iowa on the top, so if you guys have any questions or if anybody thinks of anything, uh, feel free to contact me at, uh, my number at email there. Um, other than that, I just kinda wanted to go over this frequently asked questions page, so, um, we are starting our second round of presentations, so I've gone through, uh, most of the projects, like counties and, you know, given these presentations, answered questions, so we put together a, a frequently asked question page, just based on what we were, the questions we were getting. And I think rightly so, a big concern is safety, so just kinda wanna go over some of the things that Summit Carbon Solutions is doing to ensure safety, so a hundred percent of our wells will be x-rayed, um, and then the pipeline will also be hydrostatically tested at a hundred and twenty-five percent or more of its pressure, um, of its maximum pressure. Uh, there will also be the block valves, which on your map, you can see those, they're the little red ribbons, and they're a maximum of twenty miles apart, so a lot of spots on the line are less than twenty miles apart, so, but it is a maximum of twenty miles. Um, and then we will have the pipeline, it will be monitored twenty-four seven by people in Ames, but we will also have staff, uh, like I said, living and working, working locally to maintain the line. So not only will we have that twenty-four seven, uh, staff in Ames, we'll have people, uh, living out in the communities. And then, uh, lastly, we do also have staff, uh, dedicated to working with emergency response in the counties. Um, so another thing, just going back, sorry, I'm switching hands, but, um, going back to this Iowa page, Rod Dillon, we have his name and contact information, um, he is our director of regulatory compliance, but really, he's the safety guy, so he's the one who's calling all of the emergency managers in our project counties trying to set up trainings. I know from talking to him, there will be multiple trainings, so, um, one before our staff is hired, and then after our full-time staff is hired, we will do trainings with the emergency response as well, and there will be, um, there's a lot going into that, there's a lot that we're regulated to do, so, um, if you guys have any more questions on that, feel free to contact him. Um, but that's all I have, if you guys have any questions. Uh, I also have Grant here with me, Grant Terry, he's a project manager in Iowa, so he can help answer questions as well.
You said your land acquisition in Iowa was fifty-three percent, what is it in Kassuth County?
So, Kassuth County, I know last time we were here, um, we were at about twenty percent, that was in July, and then as of the fifth of this month, we were at thirty-five percent.
Is that, can you get, yes.
Three full staff, great, that's acres.
It's easily miles. Miles.
Miles?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Well, there's a lot of talk about the eminent domain. Um, so how confident are you that you think the state would actually allow privately owned company in the domain and not a public utility?
Well, our goal from the very beginning has been a hundred percent voluntary acquisition, I mean, we've heard that a hundred times, but it is true, we do not want to use eminent domain, it's a costly process, takes a lot of time, we are confident in our land agents, um, but to your question, we're also confident in getting our permit from the IUV.
Has that ever been done to, to private entities offering eminent domain?
Um, I'm not sure on that, uh, you know, I would have to look into it.
Because eminent domain is, is primarily for public utilities, is that right?
Yes, so, and this just kinda goes back to, you know, what we talked about last time, how we do believe that this is a benefit for the public. Um, especially in the Midwest, you know, we talked about fifty-seven percent of the corn grown in Iowa goes to ethanol plants. Ethanol plants are gonna have to lower their carbon intensity scores, um, due to the regulations that are coming down. Um, Canada is the largest purchaser of US ethanol, they're putting in these regulations, so the ethanol plants are gonna have to figure something out to get their, uh, carbon intensity scores down. This will help farmers, um, in the long run, and we do believe it is a benefit for the public.
So then why not just set it up instead of all this profit going to these handful of private uh, investors like Randstad and Restetter and people like that, why not give that profit to the landowners instead of just give them a one-time payment, why not let them receive that profit? It might be more, they might be more receptive, I don't know.
Uh, anyone can invest in the project, it's not just me.
I'm not talking about investments, it's their land, why not just give them the right to, to draw up for those profits into the future instead of a handful of people making hundreds of millions of dollars off of the, off of their land that they don't own?
Well, it is an easement, it's a fifty-foot easement, and then the pipe will be underground.
I understand, but there's all kinds of ways to, to make easements, one would be to let the landowners, uh, receive the profit off of it, uh, for that, and
like the wind towers, they get excellent over here, for years.
Yeah, well, the wind towers, I mean, they're a large, uh, very large, um, they create problems with the roads, they're huge, they have lights, uh, disturbance, I mean, there's a lot going on with the wind turbines, and I, I mean, I think that's great that they pay, uh, you know, for years down the road, but that's typically not how, uh, pipelines are done, it's typically an easement, um, and it's a one-time payment, so.
At the, at the end of the day, we have no control over that here, I, I don't know why we're talking about it, it's up to the individual landowners.
Well, they'd be on record to explaining their stance on eminent domain for a non-public utility.
So if you're confident in your land agents, where do we have lawsuits going on? I think there's one in Kassuth County, and I think there's some over in western Iowa.
Is that, are you talking about the survey?
Yes.
So the survey proves, that's a, kind of a different issue there, we did send out, uh, send out the letters of notice, um, I believe it's thirty days ahead of time.
It's a ten-day notice.
Oh, it's a ten-day notice, so we did what the law requires, um, that's all I'll say on that, I'm not a lawyer.
But I got a guy that calls me, cause it's going through my area, that pipeline's going all the way through my area, and I've been in contact with this guy, and he told me, yeah, I'm getting sued, I'm gonna go to court. Can't remember what date for sure, but he's gotta go to court because he don't want you guys on his ground, that's his right. So why take him to court? Cause okay, you take him to court, you gotta go survey, he's still gonna tell you, no, I don't want to pipe from my ground, so what did you prove? I mean, it looks like you're just trying to bully people.
You're, I can tell you, we're not trying to bully people.
I know for a fact, you offered somebody money and they said that they, no, they said, well, we'll give you X amount of dollars today. If you do not sign today, you get eminent domain money, which is peanuts, so that is a threat in my eyes.
Threat in the domain, if any land agent is threatening, definitely move likes to other teams, because they should not be doing that at all.
Certainly.
At all.
I'm in contact with them, 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 I know all these people. I know the dollars are thrown out there, and I know the, basically the threats are thrown out there, and it ain't right.
Well, like I said, if you guys want to talk after this, uh, we would definitely be willing to talk to you and, uh.
Well, you just leave them alone, when they tell, you call to say, Wilden, he says, no, don't call him again, if he wants it, they'll contact you. The number's right here, if he wants it, he can call me and say, hey, what's Jesse's number, it says, okay, I want it, so leave him alone. Once you say no, it's null.
I just saw it block my phone number and my email address, I had to fix that up, I know for a perfect.
I'm unaware of that.
Uh, I, I mean, yes, and I sent them a recording, and after I sent them a recording, my ma- number magically got unblocked.
I'm not aware of Summit blocking any landowners.
I know another, that's what they did too.
Are you a landowner on the?
I'm a landowner.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, and I'm sorry if that did happen.
Oh, it didn't happen. What's your official, we're working to respond to that.
Well, you can look through FINSA, we're regulated by FINSA, so.
Oh, it's a new regulation.
I think if you actually, but this, well, we are going above and beyond, like I said, a hundred percent of the wells.
I would hear about the wells, the wells here. And all their bus pipeline.
The pipeline wells.
Oh, well.
But here's a lot of information, if you would like, and I can give that up to anybody else here, if you guys wanna look through it, um.
Are you gonna go in and rescue people, pipeline rusher?
So, we will have people living, work, and working locally to any kind of line and to respond to any type.
Are you gonna go in and rescue people?
I'm not sure what our regulations is on that, but we will follow what the federal government, uh.
So you have no plan to go in and rescue people?
That's not what I said.
Are they gonna be riding with electric vehicles to drive?
I don't think that that would be necessary, but Rod Dillon is reaching out to all of the emergency managers in the counties, and if something is needed, that's being, uh, talked about on a county, county basis. So if there's something that the county emergency response does not have, that they feel like they need, that is a discussion that we're having with them.
Providing stuff, continue reading after that.
Again, I'm by confidence.
It's your important, thank you.
So you're gonna supply those to the county maintenance workers?
Some, some of that.
When they're out working on roads.
Some of this.
Well, and like I said, I'm by confidence, cause it's not, Rod Dillon is working with the emergency managers, talking to them about what they need for their teams.
You know if Chris has been in contact with them?
I think she has, yeah.
Yes, just curious.
She has.
So I mean, there's always other ways to, there's always more than one way to do things, or has anybody ever looked into other ways of doing this carbon reduction rather than putting pipelines in, is there other, others, other ways of doing it?
The gentleman at the KC Hall that day, I can't remember his name, maybe Matt knows, he's from over by Grempinger, Estevale area. He, uh, says you can take that, uh, what you're gonna put in the pipeline and refinance, re- refine it again and get more. He, uh, says you can take that, uh, what you're gonna put in the pipeline and refinance, re-refine it again and get more ethanol out. And then what's left, you can just go poof, it's nothing. So why aren't they just refining and getting more ethanol out? Yeah, I mean, why? Because you keep talking about, you're gonna get more ethanol, we're gonna, well, you realize corn takes a lot of carbon to make a corn. So it's pulling all the carbon out right now. We, we raise corn for how long and everybody's living?
I mean, I, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you there. What I am saying is the regulations are coming no matter what. So if ethanol plants don't have anywhere to sell, um.
The carbon credits?
No, the ethanol, because their carbon intensity score is too high. I mean, it doesn't really matter how we view it. The regulations are coming no matter what. So we're trying to keep the ethanol plants in, in business and keep the farmers in business as well for the long term. This is more of a preventative project because these regulations are not here yet. So we can't see the impact that it's going to have yet, but we can, um, just by knowing that Canada is the largest purchaser of ethanol, of US ethanol. We know that that's going to have large impacts and the fact that fifty-seven percent of corn grown in Iowa is sold to ethanol plants. I mean, that's a very large impact that it will have on the communities in the state.
It looks to me like somebody ought to be looking into these alternative ways to reduce that then, rather than just this focusing on this one avenue.
I'm sure there are other ways, but pipeline transport is one of the safe, it is the safest mode of transport. Um, and we can put it into these rock formations up in North Dakota and it works that way. It's a solution that we found that works.
So you gotta be fair, I can.
No, 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 it's there.
Why the oil company give you guys how much money?
How come the big oil companies have invested in Summit if they're not gonna gain some profit back? Right here, you're gonna put the carbon in, it's heavier, goes down the bottom, oil comes up, it's easier to get oil.
That's enhanced oil recovery and that is not what we're doing at all. I think we're like forty, fifty miles from the closest place that you can do that. So, uh, that is not our goal at all, never has been.
Do you have the rights on them mines that you're talking about to put, put it in yet?
Yes.
The land is leased.
You do have the land?
Yes.
So I heard a while back, you guys didn't even have the land leased.
That would probably be Navigator, uh, not semi-carbon solutions.
I don't know why we're even having a conversation like this. That's like me telling you how to farm or how someone else how to run their business. I mean, that's, that's not our responsibility here.
My responsibility is, he's my constituent, he's my constituent, he's my constituent.
Yes, our, our.
That's my responsibility and that's why I'm talking for him.
You're, you're criticizing their business plan.
Oh, I.
Well, we're asking.
Safety and health, safety, welfare, all that.
That's because, that's because the people.
Their business plan is not in three thirty-one. That's not our responsibility.
But that's because the people who are in here are people who vote us, vote for us and they expect us.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't support them. I'm saying criticizing their business plan is not our responsibility.
We're asking questions for these.
And where's your people? I don't see none of your people from your area.
Summit does not go through my area.
Well, we make the rules. Summit and Navigator are same. When we say pipeline at the end, it's pipeline.
Yeah, but this is an update. This is not about making.
Well, whatever they get by with Dylan, the next one's just gonna walk in and get to do the same thing.
That's not the point.
Well, when I went, ran around four years ago, I said, whatever the people want me to fight, we're on the fight. That's what I'm doing.
To speak to your comment, uh, around it, the oil piece of it where they are claiming that we can utilize it for advanced storm recovery. So, you know, people like to point to the money aspect of this and we do have on one side the government tax credit. And on the other side, the premium, which we were essentially split with ethanol plants. When they're allowed to sell their ethanol at a premium, having the lower carbon intensity score. Now, the government tax credit is reliant on us permanently sequestering the CO2. So is the reduction in the carbon intensity for each ethanol plant is reliant on us permanently sequestering the, the CO2 as opposed to utilizing it for any other services. And, uh, I don't remember who asked the question, but are, are there other methods of reducing a carbon intensity score? Yes. Are there methods in place to essentially take up one step process to reduce the carbon intensity score by over thirty points? No, which is why they're looking to the pipeline method. It would essentially bring them from, most are sitting around a fifty-two or fifty-four right now, as far as the score goes, out of a hundred. This would essentially bring them down to twenty, twenty-two. Yes. What we're doing.
In Texas, yeah, not here.
I mean, what would be the point with that?
Oh.
It's almost their mouth.
It's the most, the pipe's gonna be, how much is it gonna affect our crops down?
During, during home operation, it'll be, it'll be a temperature, the ground's running.
Yeah, I know.
Well.
I'm sorry, the line, we got sixteen-inch pipe, twenty-one hundred PSI. How much noise does that could make? Uh, it makes a lot, uh, in my experience. No, no, sir.
You, you. I prefer to pipeline three in a pump.
I work around the pole up, or at least move my work here.
They create a pump.
Have we had enough discussion?
I think so.
I think there's, there's a boardroom, an old boardroom over there. I think it's empty. If you guys wanna have conversations with Summit, I think it'd be appropriate to go over there. Cause we do have an agenda that we have to follow and we have to do more business today. Yeah, we got one question, yeah.
In July, I think you brought up the eight hundred thousand dollars of tax that we knew that would come into the county. Is that correct, roughly close?
Uh, yes.
Where did you get them figures and will they be prorated? And is there a tax abatement on that, that the county would receive all that every year?
So they're essentially assessed. It is an estimate, uh, based off of the operation and construction costs of the project. Um, our assistant now came up with those numbers based on the construction, operation costs of the project. I'm not a tax expert, I will tell you that. I do know that they're centrally assessed. I do believe that part of that would depreciate over time, or, but not.
It should look less than that figure depending on.
This would be a worse year estimate, yes.
Plus, that's also probably general taxes to the county, which some of that would go to schools and other entities as well. So it's not all going to come directly to the county.
Correct.
I believe it would be done just like any other pipeline taxes, like.
And if the county felt that they needed, um, emergency equipment or extra personnel, is Summit going to pay for that one hundred percent or is that come out of the county's own budget?
That, again, that would be a county-by-county basis. Rod Dylan is having those conversations, he got right now, so.
I just wanted to ask, did you send it on part of, you know, those discussions, you want to see if you know, you know, you still know.
Yeah. So there's, there's an old boardroom, just on the other side.
Feel free to go down there, go down there and answer any questions for him.
But like chairs, tables, a big long table on there?
Yep.
And, and I don't know if it was ever advertised to the public, but last Wednesday, I think there was a pipeline safety meeting down here in Algonia. And I was the only one that attended it before. So there was a lot of talk about, um, situations, planning stuff out. So I guess that was beneficial for me.
Oh, were you a little tired of that?
Yeah.
I got it on, I got it on email. So I don't, I don't know where, I don't know that it was out to the public. We were notified as elected officials.
It's not the first time I have been notified. If it was the.
It was, it was not hosted by Summit. It was not hosted by Summit.
I believe it was a core program and that's, um, something, I believe some people from Summit did attend, but it's just the pipeline safety. I think it's for the emergency response in each county. So probably, probably put them out in the notification, but the emergency response in each county would have.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you much for coming. Thank you guys for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, man.
I get a little flustered.
I'm on the agenda today. I'm sure you've been, you're right, actually, once they got more. Motion to everything, because you don't, the what? Motion to everything that, that, whatever. Did you provide that at that meeting? I didn't have any like that because there was a survey, wasn't there?
Yeah, we filled, Tammy filled out the survey.
Okay. Did you guys have a discussion, not that?
I don't, we haven't, we haven't heard anything back on, or I haven't heard anything back from ISAC.
Okay. Yeah, we are just keeping informed on my, right now we're.
There is, yeah, there's, there's a funding request from ISAC for soil compaction project, um, later on in the agenda. But that's not the intervention thing that you're talking about.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Because also I'm still waiting to have direction on the ordinance.
Yes.
Uh, has anybody else passed an ordinance? Do you know, in case we. Has anybody else passed that ordinance that we're looking at?
I don't know, just, uh, Chelsea.
I may have to.
I have it.
They're on their fourth revision.
That's fine.
I heard on the radio, they were talking about it on the radio last week, how Summit's coming against them because it's not legal.
Okay. Well, that's, so we'll just maybe put it on next week's agenda so they can kind of have a touch of base on that.
At some point, we have to do something.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, as we have to get it done sooner than later.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Bill.
We are up to Doug, discussion, approval pledge for local road safety plan.
Yes, morning.
Morning.
A couple of weeks ago, we talked a little bit about some, and girl, uh, money that is available with the new transportation law. A possibility of receiving funding. Um, the board did take some action at that time to, uh, to join in that. And now we need to update what we call the local road safety plan. That's one of the first steps that we need to do. Uh, I included in your folder a copy of the plan, uh, which really just formalizes the Cassuth County supports goals of Iowa's two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three strategic highway safety plan and the overall vision of zero fatalities on Iowa's public perimeters. Uh, this is a, a part that will be inserted into the Cassuth County, uh, local safety plan. And I'm just asking the board to go ahead and approve of that.
What else is there for our, um, roles and stuff? I mean, this is a half-page thing. What else is?
Well, we do have a safety plan right now that was created approximately five years ago. We had a public hearing. We had, uh, studies of our crashes. If there were situations that were considered to be, uh, areas where they could be improved, they've been brought up in that plan. And I think there were ten, ten locations. For the most part, Cassuth County roads are pretty safe. We have a couple of intersections that, for some reason, we have fatalities at. It's always difficult to look at these, but if there are situations, this will allow us, and they are included in our safety plan. It'll allow us to get some alternative funding for construction, safety.
Is that a large document or?
Two binders. It's not elected.
Do I have motion to approve the pledge of local road safety plan?
Sure.
I have motion by loss. I have a second by Casey. Any discussion? Here now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carried unanimously. Construction ended right away. You bet.
Uh, we have one road that is being closed for Culver Construction. It's a north line of section twenty-six, I believe, of Laverne Township. It is in your electronic folder with a location map. Other contractor did move on to that. So I'd like the board to act on that resolution, to close that road officially.
We have resolution numbers.
Right south of, uh.
Danny Hilbert's in it.
Danny, it'd be a mile south of Danny Hilbert. There's a two-span timber bridge.
Marty's.
We have resolution number ten, eleven, twenty-two, oh, two, to do some road construction. So I have a motion by Casey. Do I have a second? Second, second by plan. Do a roll call vote, please.
Second?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Lost?
Yes.
Plan?
Yes.
Jerk?
Yes.
And that is all the construction and the road right away that I have.
So we are up to discussion.
Discuss one thing with you. But first I will just summarize a few things quick. Uh, the Fairweel Road, I believe that it is all completed. I did not get up there yesterday to drive it. But I think traffic marking is on and all the signs and all the road closed signs are down. The Irkin Bridge, they have all the caps poured. They're planning on setting beams the end of next week. And then they'll be forming up the deck. And in the middle of November, we are anticipating, uh, that deck to be poured. So, so let's hold it. A four-way bridge, they are backfilling, putting in some drainage pipe there. All the culvert sections have been set. Uh, we have been hauling fill to them. They do have to fill in between the culvert sections. And then when that is completed, we will be able to, um, we will be able to fill over the box culverts. Um, they are to pour that concrete Wednesday and Thursday. And, uh, Friday, we will be hauling material to them, I'm assuming, to start getting that intersection filled up. The middle of next week, hopefully that'll be able to dry over. Everything will be opened up. Seventy-seven, twenty-one, oh, six, that's the culvert south of Titanca. The fill was in yesterday. They just needed to get some finish work done on it and that they had to get, I think that that will be open tonight. That's what I'm hoping for there. Resurfacing, they have completed the resurfacing on P sixty, that's sixty-four, six oh six to the east of Laverne, there's six miles. We'll be putting, we will be tomorrow getting driveways, grow, uh, roads and entrances to fields. We'll get those filled in for more.
You get ahold of that guy?
I have an idea. I will contact. Thank you. Uh, forty-seven, twenty-six, forty is the project we just closed the road on. They are, I just thought of something. Uh, that should be close to being driven over this week. I don't think, that should not take very long. Ninety-seven, eleven, oh, two, that's a bridge, section eleven, uh, Lincoln Township, Merriman Bridge construction. There's a pre-construction conference for that right now. They were talking about possibly, if we got large enough, going to the old boardroom. I think they're gonna do it in our office. But anyway, uh, that is a bridge on the west side of section eleven of Lincoln. Uh, timber structure again, um, Merriman's, they'll have to pour, they'll have to, uh, dry piling, pour caps, pour deck. Uh, it's a gravel road. Bridge is posted about, I think, ten ton, so closing it, I don't think is gonna be a big. Situation for adjacent landowners. Uh, Leonard Wind Power. They got four turbines remaining to be, uh, erected. Cassoue Wind Energy has nine turbines up now out of the twenty-five, so they're, they've got a good start on that. The one sixty-nine bridge, uh, from the DOT, last I heard, uh, looking to open that up in the middle of November. But I need to talk with the DOT and get one thing better. And then DOT, the USA team resurfacing is going on also. Uh, we still have open positions, Mechanic Shop, Laverne, Lone Rock, we're advertising for, and the mechanic, or the, uh, uh, transfer station. I put out an equipment request for quotes on some trucks and semis. They're due to me Friday afternoon at four. I was planning on reviewing them Monday. If anyone from the board would like to present when I open those, um, quotes up, you're more than welcome. I just want to make sure before I. Bring them to the board on Tuesday that everything needs sped. So if you would like to do that, let me know.
What time, what time are you planning?
Eight thirty.
On Monday?
Monday morning, yes. Uh, we do have a motor grader down, it's motor grader that kind of works in, uh, Cresco Township has lost oil pressure. Um, we have pulled the engine actually, there's a Ziegler mechanic, Mark Lifter is working in our shop. We pulled the engine trying to figure out whether it's an oil pump, hopefully it's just an oil pump. But, uh, gotta explore a little bit, see what's going on there. And then Chuck Ready called and they are going to crush gravel, start crushing gravel. In the Rothland pit at the end of this. I'll be mad about gravel because they'll be moving a little too. Wire out the old man.
Yeah, so he gets his corn out?
I don't know if he has it out now or not, but, uh, I'll talk with him. And then, um, I just want to visit. I don't know if the board is aware or not of. Is a road notification closure tool that we use. And the website is W W W dot Iowa County Roads dot org. And this is really, this is a public. Public webpage of this County Engineer Service Bureau. You can see right up here.
Iowa County Roads dot org.
Iowa County Roads dot org, yes. And for road closures, if you go down here in the lower part of this little right-hand side, click View Map, you see State of Iowa. And if you, these are all participating counties in this, if you click on Cassoue County. There's the construction that's going on in Cassoue County and Detours. We try to keep the state work identified in this as well. Um, you can zoom in if you want to and get road numbers, different things like this. What I really want to talk about is this subscribe button up here. I am going to, as soon as this meeting is over, visiting with Derek. You guys can email by emailing supervisors at Cassoue County Iowa dot gov.
I believe I already get those notifications. I'm not sure if the rest do.
If you do.
So we got one this morning.
I think. There were some of that, we have to, we have to. We have to manually.
This was, this was the third district supervisor I came.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If, the way I'm doing it, it's just gonna automatically go out. Um, people can subscribe to it, or we can choose people to send it to. So if you do receive a. Notification that you are subscribing to, uh, road closure notifications from, uh. It would be the Iowa County ICE ASB, I think, is that the email you receive from this morning? ICE ASB dot org.
I don't think I got one this morning, I think it was yesterday.
Yeah, or yesterday, I'm sorry.
Yesterday, two twenty-five ICE ASB dot org, yeah.
Yeah, if you do receive that. Um, that is what's going on, I'm subscribing you to that. If you have, uh. Want to have some sort of a text message or email on your phone, you can also go to the subscribe and put whatever. Whatever email you would like to be contacted.
Are you doing anything to publish that out or share it with the public? So they can, like, um. Methods of informing them, has it been on the radio, newspaper, anything like that?
No, we have not. We've.
I think, I think that would be valuable.
We've been, really working with school buses, uh, postal carriers, emergency management, emergency services, fire department, law enforcement. Uh, trying to get our database built that way. So, and word is starting to get out because there are some volunteer, uh. Whether they're volunteer firefighters, volunteer EMS, uh, are also contacting us. So, but we can, uh. Maybe after this construction season and over the winter, we can talk about this, or maybe when next year. This is just really starting to. This tool is really coming along to one that they created a while back. And now we can have that automatic notification, uh, and not have to worry about choosing who it has to go to.
Yeah, and that's, that's nice service. It just, the more we can advertise it and promote it, the better, more people stay informed.
But, uh, anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that. That's all the road stuff, and I mentioned, uh, the operator at the. Supply transfer station, so that's really all that I have.
Doug, I had gotten some calls about the four-way bridge over by tech where the culvert swung in. Did, was there any issue with, um, the foundation not being compacted or not being dense enough where they were settling and stuff was pulled out, redone? I wasn't aware of that either, but evidently there's room for going around to that effect.
No, there was, there was nothing wrong with it.
Okay.
I mean, we had to. They had, they had a situation where their temporary, uh. Water runaround was underneath of these. Or even northwest line of box culverts, so we had to, they had to overexcavate that naturally and.
That's fine.
Fill in, but I don't know why that would have ever, what kind of rumor.
I, I, I had told people that I wasn't aware of that, but I.
It was a lo- local engineer.
Pardon me?
It was a local engineer that lives by there.
So.
That's not who I heard of.
So there, I, there were rumors about the DOT bridge.
Oh, yeah, do you have a, do you have any idea on one sixty-nine or town?
Oh, that's the one, I think, in the middle of November, but I am gonna be getting in contact. Two weeks ago, I talked with, uh, uh, DOT. Assistant District Engineer, and he said it was about four weeks, and I'm just gonna drive it there sometime and just, uh. Visit with the contractor about and see what their plans are and get the, get a word from them. So that's all that I have.
Thank you, Doug.
You bet.
Thanks.
Thanks.
We're up to discussion of ISAC Soil Compaction Project Funding Request.
Yeah. Emailing all that's attached to the packet here, but. It looks like they are asking for six hundred dollars for, as a voluntary contribution. They're asking it from all the counties to cover the costs of our projects, which is just over fifty thousand, so if. If all ninety-nine counties participate, it evenly shared that way. And this should be very beneficial, um, information and. Potential plan of action as far as how to do any pipeline or any other type of construction work. In areas without damaging the soil and having. Compaction that lasts for years or decades. So it would be done through Iowa State. I don't, I don't really know anymore about it than it's in the letter. This, I'm trying to pack it, but.
Do you know how many counties have signed on to it, or going to it?
This is probably the first time it would be on an agenda, because when I saw the email, I sent it to Tim to put it on the agenda, so I mean. I don't hope anyone else has done it yet, might be on agendas today. I guess Humboldt means on Monday, I don't know if they did it or not, but. I'm not sure on that, but this, this would be towards the beginning of their timeframe that's open.
I was just gonna say that Iowa State has done studies on compaction for the last, since it was initiated as Iowa State University. Why, why would we do another one? They have all the. Compaction data ready that I think you could compile an encyclopedia on it. I gue- I guess I'm missing the point that we need another study on compaction. We know that it compacts the soil, we know that it harms the soil, I mean, that.
So one of the things that was discussed at the ISAC meeting. Previously, and I believe I mentioned it, was they have a tool. That you can kind of track or, or look at compaction based on the rainfall in a specific area, and. I, I don't know all the specifics behind it, but it's got three specific objectives of the study are as follows. Determine infield moisture and wetness at various soil consistency from field sampled soils at top and subsoil layers. The soil cone entrometer will be measured at the sampling sites to document the infield degree of soil compaction before construction activities. A lot of measuring and estimating rainfall events and how that impacts soil. And, um, estimate the number of days allowing the soil to regain its load-bearing support with less disturbance. So, I mean, they have compaction data, but this is more targeted towards pipelines and construction activity. So, I feel like six hundred dollars is a pretty small price that I pay to. Try and get some valuable data.
But if I read this correctly, it says. There are currently three counties planning construction of carbon-scrushing pipelines, these pipelines across twelve seventy counties now. However, the planning of the research will benefit agricultural owners and all future utility construction entities, so it probably is not gonna help. These three projects that we got going on, correct? The two projects.
Well, I don't know the timeline on these, but it would, it would be something for the future as well, for sure. I don't know when it would be done, or not sure if that's in here somewhere.
So it's something that pipeline companies should do. Well, then, they should be. If you go to Iowa State's website, you can figure, look at their compaction data, and it tells you the wet of the soil, the, the higher the rate of compaction is already, so. Why spend money on the study? We know what the answer is.
You can go Kabo Goo, you're not gonna back saying.
Yeah.
And it's okay.
Compaction varies compared to weather conditions and soil types.
It doesn't sound like it's some absolute necessity to spend tax dollars all my opinion.
My order, but I'm just going so. Do you want to make a motion on that, Mr. Stecker, or?
I would make motion to approve their funding request.
I have a motion by Mr. Stecker to approve the funding request for Iowa State new compaction study. Do I have a second? Again, at last, do I have a second? Hearing no, none, I'll say the motion fails for lack of a second. Time for fifteen minute break?
Greenage?
Yes, drainage.
Yeah, yeah, if you can get to the till.
Kyle, how are we gonna know when this thing is on, Rob?
The lights on the owl show when it's connected to a computer and in use.
So you got it turned on right now?
It's on right now, yeah.
Lights it on now? We're on break, and the rules are.
There is no one in here.
The rule, Kyle, we just passed, we just passed the rule that gets, it's turned off during break.
So do I have access to the county's technology to edit stuff out? Because I don't have that.
Well, put it on the agenda next week again, we gotta, because he's not, he's not gonna follow our rules. Put it on the agenda next week, we gotta clarify. I guess we're gonna have to make it, we're gonna have to make a policy because Kyle didn't follow the rules. We just passed.
There was no one in here.
We just passed the rule that when it goes on break, that is turn, all recording devices are turned off. Did you not, did you not do that? I know you abstained, but that doesn't mean you can't. You, you don't have to follow the rules. I can't, I don't know what you, I don't understand how much clearer we could make it. It was very clearly stated that. When the pledge of allegiance is set, you turn it on, when, when he says we're taking break, they're turned off. Is that not what we voted on?
That's what else?
Is that not what we voted on, Kyle? Is that what we voted on and passed?
Well, let's go start drainage, Margie's here.
Put it on the agenda next week again, will you?
Well, Margie.
Some people don't remember. I heard him on the radio yesterday. Can't remember if it were Monday or Sunday.
Sunday.
So.
Happy birthday, Marge.
Yep.
Happy birthday. Yeah, hope you have many, many, many more.
Me too.
If you're not gonna retire.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. The first thing on agenda is approve pay at five for DD four. Team of project. My own dues, a hundred and eleven thousand fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. He must be getting pretty well completed.
Believe all the excavation is complete, all the pipes are in. They are working on putting riprap in right now. There will be more leveling work to be done. They're waiting for some props to get out for some of that. That's just a quick. Summary there, I guess.
Any questions on the project? If not, I need a motion to approve payout number five for DD four.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Stecker. There are seconds. Again, we have a motion for payout number five for GD four theme project. Mr. Stecker made the motion. There are second. Saying that we need to pay the man by long, I'll make the second. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey.
That's a conflict up there, but yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have a letter from Dickinson Westergaard of DD four lad eleven to set a date and time for an informal hearing.
Colin Witt, Jacobson Westergaard texted me when. He got done with his meeting in Dickinson County. So he said, quick call when ready. Do you guys like me to call him or?
To. The board want a little discussion with this project is, I'm very well aware of it. Casey, are you aware of what this is? Jay Goshi wants to fill in a portion of an open ditch. To get to the edge of his right away. He's not interfering with anything in the open ditch. He's not restricting any drainage. And he has hired an engineer to do a study. You said you talked to. The attorney. He had no issues.
Yes, so we'll get into that, but do you guys want Colin on the phone or? Nah, I mean, he can help walk through some of the situation and.
Who's paying for it? If it's already.
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
It's all private.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's county tile, so he's gonna pay for.
Well, he's footing bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take him a promo.
I, I don't know that we need him on the phone, as long as you understand what's going on.
Okay, so if we're. We're not calling him, then I'll just explain the situation. Knowing the history. Well, Roger can summarize the proposal and all that's good. On. So Thursday or Friday, I don't remember what day it was. I think it was Thursday. There's pre-construction meeting for DD sixty sub one. Someone clears were up in the area for that. And then. After that was over, I was talking to them about DD four lad eleven. And we met with Jay Goshi and Tad Wrights all after that out in the field. And we're talking through the plans that the engineers have and making, making sure everything was. As Jay expected it. All that was fine, but during that conversation, we had. Thought about calling some of the neighboring landowners or informing them about stuff. And one that was called was Joe Goshi, which we all got an email from the next day. Accusing me of not being able to read a map, which. I told him on the phone that on the map it says thirty-six inch, but it's actually a sixteen inch pipe or. I believe that's what it is. It looks like a sixteen. I didn't go down there with a tape measure, but it looks just a little bit smaller. Than the private tile that Jay had put in the head wall of the ditch. I have a picture here if anyone like to see it, or I could email it to you, but. The county tile dumps in on the west side of the ditch, so to speak. Jay's private one goes down in the kind of the middle and the bottom. And then there's another smaller one on the. East or like northeastern right side of the photo here. And the work Colin did to appropriately size this is all kind of summarized in that letter. But. It. They figured out the acres that would potentially drain into the upper end of that head wall, which came up to three hundred and fifty-five. Acres that were tiled drained. And they did a three quarter inch per day full efficient to. Prepare for current and future drainage needs. And as it was already noted, Jay is paying for the entire project here or change to the project. I had talked to Hudson as well and in. Four sixty-eight, one twenty-six, section four and paragraph A under that. It says, this is talking about an improvement and that was one of. Hudson's questions is whether the engineers are classifying this as repair or improvement. Colin's argument was that it doesn't really fit the criteria for either very well, but he said even if you call it an improvement. It goes back to a dollar amount or a percentage of the total cost of the district and subsequent. Improvements, whichever is greater and the board, it says the board may order the work done without notice. We all. Were on the same page that we don't feel we should do this without notice to anyone. But we talked about doing an informal hearing rather than a formal hearing because of the timelines. And the fact that we have an active project in the works on this ditch, time is kind of of the essence. So. We had talked about doing an informal hearing. Or informational meeting, whatever you would like to call it, on October twenty-fifth. Which would be two weeks would give time to send letters out to the people that are impacted. And make sure they're informed and aware of it and still kind of go through the process that way. Does anyone have any questions or anything else you'd like explained?
The only question I have is knowing who is in that drainage district. Are we sure we have all our keys crossed and all our dots in place so that we don't get another lawsuit from a person?
So that's where the code section comes into play. It specifically says that. Improvements can be made if it's under that dollar amount without any notice. So we would be going above and beyond to do. Even an informal hearing. The only thing difference between an informal and a formal hearing is that it does not have the time requirements. And it also therefore does not have the force of law behind it, but. We could have an informal hearing, see what the discussion brings and if a formal hearing is. Required or deemed appropriate at that time, we could always have another hearing over it. But if we scheduled a formal hearing right now, the ability to complete the project in this. In the timeframes that they are already supposed to be working under. Would be slim to none, which would then require change order and have many other implications that way. So. This is. Yes, I would say the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, but. Yeah, it's only, it's only three hundred and fifty-five acres. It's not that many landowners. It would just be a few letters.
I'll move to set up informal hearing on October twenty-fifth at ten o'clock.
I would second that.
Do you want Hudson available by phone?
Colin had said he would be available for that. Dan said he did not know if he'd be available for that. That depends on some personal reasons for him.
Yeah.
But then Hudson said he may be available by phone. He's traveling and has some other stuff going on that way, so he's not for sure of his plans yet. But he said he would let Marge know what his schedule is looking like and would try to be available by phone.
Check with him, see if he is.
So this is an informal hearing that doesn't need to have a notice in paper. It's directly being notices sent to.
Just to the landowner. I, I don't believe any notices required for an informal hearing. It's just.
I don't think you need to do it because you're gonna mail every landowner.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I don't see a need, but.
So this is an informal hearing for DD four lad eleven.
Should it even be called a hearing or should it just be called?
Yeah, you're gonna have an informal.
Yeah, you can have an informal hearing.
Did he name it? Is it this? He asked for the schedule of eleven B, so this what is affected that comes directly.
So it's DD four eleven.
I don't, I don't know if he had it named in his letter that way. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it would be eleven B.
Yeah, it is, yep.
Yeah, and that's what he had asked for a schedule of.
Right, so that's what we're sending letters out to with DD four being, get that in the pen and said it's eleven.
Yeah.
And just leave it at that. We don't need improvement repairs.
No.
No, just an informal hearing.
Because we don't know if we're gonna do it for repairs until we get done with the informal hearings.
Yeah.
So do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yeah.
Class?
Yes.
Sharks.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Marge. Anything else? You're doing a great job. We didn't have any repairs.
Yes, I'm giving what I can.
You build your own, there's nothing caving in.
Yeah, it's pretty much why. We have our time with the auditor.
Okay, so. Next week, we approve the quarterly reports. Um, we have got received our cost allocation plan for twenty twenty-two back. We hire that firm that does that for us every year. So next year we'll acknowledge that we can have the chairman. Fine, I believe I've already put that in your packets for next week, so that you have time to look at it before next week. Um, then acknowledge the transfers made at the county auditor. That's what I have on the agenda so far for next week. The, talked about the things on Jerry Goshi. And then I wanted to talk to you about something that Phil brought to me yesterday and kind of let you know where we are. Phil came over yesterday because he had gotten. A call from a guy from Bancroft regarding the EMS. Property tax levy that's gonna be on the ballot because the gentleman. Reads it as it is getting taxed seventy-five cents per thousand on assessed value. That's how I read it. Phil reads it as taxable value on taxable value. And so he talked to people on his end which agree. I called the auditor in Jones County, which is where we got our resolution from. She thought it was assessed value. So I sent an email down to Molly, who's at the Secretary of State's office. She also agreed assessed value. But Phil had called the Department of Revenue and they said taxable value. So then I was completely confused. So I sent Molly an email and said, I don't know where to go from here. We just need a solid answer. So she said she has contact at the Department of Revenue, which she was gonna call down. I hadn't heard anything back, so I emailed her this morning. And she said that they have sent it to their local government section for an answer and she hasn't heard anything.
That's a big difference.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a substantial difference.
Yeah.
Seven hundred bucks or a hundred twenty-five, you could be paying two hundred fifty dollars, right?
So, and Phil's concern is we, he wants to make sure people are getting the right information and it's gonna be published in the paper. So we wanna make sure we're giving out the right information, which I agree. So I don't, you know, since we're both getting different answers. You know, we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page and that the answers we're getting are reliable. So.
So if it, if it comes back and you're saying on assessed value, what does that mean? Can you still, we still, can you still change it to?
Well, then it says in the ballot language says assessed value.
So we can't change it.
Well, it depends. That's a question we're gonna have to ask for, but that's how the code is written. The code is written assessed value.
Right.
On all taxable property. So that's where it's confusing. It says assessed value on all taxable property. So Nick, we asked Nick and he says, well, we've only ever done levies on the taxable value. But it's confusing the way it's written, so that's why we want clarification.
So they could be saying it's levied on your assessed value, but the portion that's taxed by us.
But we need clarification in order to proceed because I don't feel comfortable enough saying that's what it is.
Right.
We, we've never levied taxes except on assessed value of a taxable.
Right.
Yeah.
Ever.
So it, it almost has to be that, because.
But I would have thought if that were the case, that it has to be, then most people that I asked those questions, who would have known that?
And should have.
And they are saying.
But.
They are not, they don't know about that. It's come right to them. So I don't, I don't wanna say yes, let's do it that way because I don't wanna be.
No. I, I, I agree with you totally, but I'm disappointed in the state because they have. No guidance for counties anymore, but they push down crap to the counties right and left and tell us, well, fix it.
Yeah.
And it's getting ridiculous.
And, and those people should know the difference in that. I mean, I'm not an expert in taxes. I don't know that anyone here is, but those people work in those jobs for a reason. That's, that's their position. They should know the answer.
And I feel like I should know the answer to that too, but we just do a little bit of the tax part of it. You know, we enter in the values, you know, and then. And the, you know, so. I, I don't know the answer, but I'm gonna make sure that we have a solid answer before we go forth. And I know Phil was hoping to have an answer yesterday because. Paper is gonna be publishing his rebuttal to the letter to that editor this week.
Well, and I mean, tonight's EMS meeting in Bancroft.
That's got postponed, I think.
Oh, it did.
Till after harvest, I thought he's.
Oh, yeah, he did say yesterday that they wanted postponed.
They, they wanted it postponed till after harvest, I think.
Yeah.
Well, all the other meetings, I mean, even the one in Wedmore that's already done, that was a big piece of the conversation.
So, and, and hopefully it's, it's all okay and it's all worded rightly. We don't have any issues. But we just wanna make sure because when it's time to tax. We wanna make sure we're taxing. But we just want to make sure because when it's time to tax, we want to make sure we're taxing.
It's on assessed value, hopefully.
Yeah. Assessed value is double in first cases.
You want it on assessed taxable value. That takes a.
Not an assessed.
Right, assessed taxable value.
You wanted a taxable.
You want a taxable value evaluation, not assessment.
Right. It's the assessed word that's throwing everybody off.
Well, and I mean, the code and laws can be hard to read sometimes, but I could. I could kind of follow it where they're saying it's the assessed taxable value because.
No, they're not. They're not saying that. They're saying the assessed value on taxable property.
On taxable property.
That's wrong wording, really.
It's it's confusing because the word is used multiple places, but that taxable value is also assessed in some form.
If it said taxable value, I would be fine, but they don't. They say taxable property.
Mm-hmm.
Which means something different.
Yeah.
So that's where I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah.
Well. Well, the code's only black and white.
Now, I.
No, it's not. Because you got the business tax credit that gets written off. What does that all go to? And then you're.
There's rollbacks.
There's rollbacks on things and it's sometimes it's not real clear.
And I have to get a hold of Jones County to get an answer because she's planning on doing theirs on assessed value.
Actually, Wright County might be one to ask because they did a measure for essential service how many years ago. So they should know whether it's on taxable.
I don't mean they did it, right.
Well, no, but at least.
Because Jones County is doing it right now plans on doing it on assessed value, not taxable.
Yeah.
And it's on their ballot.
It's on their, yeah. So I think it's wrong.
So that's why it's important.
Yeah.
Because everybody's just, he's in a look there.
Let's make sure we do it right.
Yeah.
If it goes to assessed value, I'm not gonna be very happy.
Well, that would generate, wouldn't that generate a lot more dollars than they were planning?
Don't.
Yeah, I mean, that that's not good for any piece of the equation.
And and this gentleman in Bancroft, I don't know who he is. That's the way he reads it.
I I know what you're talking about.
That's who people where this started. He's concerned and and I I agree with that.
I know.
Yeah.
So so I'm just waiting for an answer on that and hopefully I will get one soon. I know Molly's looking into it for me.
When you find out, can you let us know?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So that's all I.
Anything, Mr. Stecker, on meetings?
At five point safety meeting was Wednesday night. I I don't have any mic handouts or anything with me, I guess, but I thought it was a good meeting. There was supervisors from Webster and Hubble that came up for it and. Not sure what all other areas were represented. There was some individuals from Lakota and Whittamore, like fire EMS people. Other than that, I think that's all for Kasoot County that was represented there. Um, there's sheriff and then obviously the company reps for different pipelines. They talked about what their areas were, what products were transported by their pipeline, how they would respond to different types of situations. Basically, kind of a tabletop exercise of if this happens, what do we do? One example was with the, and I'm not gonna say the company because I don't remember for sure, but there's a smaller, more like direct supplier to the customers for natural gas and heating needs that way. And they said like if they had a small leak, as long as they could contain the area and make sure people were safe. If it was in the dead of winter, they would not shut their pipeline down because if they shut it down, then they would be cutting off energy service to all the houses in Elgona, for example. So then you would have people going without heat. So they said there's there's different situations and there's different ways they handle different situations. But it was just a exercise talking through some of that stuff.
Well, they just had one of them two weeks ago, now going to the pipeline. They fixed it live. They never shut it off.
Nope.
They did an action.
Yeah.
Which was that something where it would both likely, which I can't speak for Summit Navigator or any other CO2 pipeline, but I think that would be different than their approach because obviously natural gas is heating needs. If you have something that happens in the winter or you got other things that are relying on that service, they don't ha- always have the option to shut it down. CO2 is, you could stop capturing it for the time it takes to fix it and move on. But I obviously, like I said, I can't speak for them. And I don't think they had any representatives there. But it was an interesting program.
Mr. Casey?
Had some drainage problems with the stitch that got in taken care of. It's about private tile. Got that resolved and taken care of and. People asking about the wind stuff. And. I gotta get back to a guy on, uh, he will help me for the EMS, but I was in a dead spot and I didn't get the message till this morning and then he called me Saturday. Otherwise, I had no extra meetings last week.
Jack?
Yeah, we talked about a couple of things. Get the board of health tomorrow morning.
I went to the safety meeting yesterday. Thought Todd did an excellent job. So did Carissa. She did a good job. It was stopped a bleed and. I didn't get to the one with the shooter, active shooter drill. I don't know. That was after dinner.
It was.
Was it? Good.
I liked how they talked about what happens in a situation, how they deal with those situations and back and forth. And like they showed an exercise where they had a red dot on the screen and they had gave the laser pointer to one person and said, okay, now keep that red light on the dot as it moves on the screen. And she did really well at first and then it kept speeding up and speeding up. And then she had a hard time keeping up. And they said, that's how the brain works. If you give it more things or more, it can't stay focused on that thing for that long. So if you're doing things to interrupt that person, throwing whatever you have, a stapler, a ball, whatever, that's gonna distract them enough time to maybe get things done. So they taught us things of what we can do so that we know how we'll act or maybe be prepared for us. They talked about the different, you know, layers that you could be at when a situation happens. So I it was very informative. And they did a really, they did. There's three of them that did it together and they did a really good job.
Good. Well, you met with Judy some on taxing on the windmills and we're not getting a definite answer from the state on that either. It's ridiculous. There shouldn't be a rollback on, uh, windmills because they got drafted under a different code section. And it would be wrong to give them a rollback.
Oh, yeah. They've already got a bait there.
Right. So.
Yeah, they're already maxed at thirty.
Yeah, we've been calling senators and representatives and we haven't got an answer yet, so. Other than I have nothing else. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So we got plans second by Casey. Any discussion? Nothing else to come before the good of Kasoot County. All those in favor of adjournings, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
They bring in some.